Could, please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the fight of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, maybe what we should do is do the roll call first and then we'll move into having you appoint a chairperson. So Sparks is absent and excused, Zagami absent and excused, Ermeling?
Here.
Maloney absent and excused, John?
Here.
Ziegler?
Here.
Feeny?
Here.
All right, now that I would ask that the board appoints someone to chair the meeting this evening.
I move to appoint trustee John as the pro tem for the evening.
Is there a second? Is there a second? John, are you, did you hear?
Yeah, I did.
Okay.
I moved that Barbara Ermeling, I'm sorry.
Oh, go ahead.
I moved that former president Barb Ermeling is appointed for the chair of the meeting.
Is there a second?
I'll second it, doesn't make any difference to me.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carried. And Barb? I'll hand this over to you.
Okay, um, okay, where, public comments, is there any, okay, Mr. White?
Thank you. Madam Chairman, if you don't know, I've been appointed as district supervisor for District 21, and I'm on the board of supervisors, just thought I'd introduce myself, and in case you didn't know, I have the map of the area that I cover. I'm looking forward to representing that portion of the village, not that we will represent all of it, but the county boards meeting. My email address and all that other information is on the county website, you can roll me my email. And I'll ask, are there some questions?
Congratulations on the appointment. Okay, anyone else? Any presentations? Hearing, open hearing and here comments for the operator license for Parker Gray. To open the hearing?
Yeah, did you want to just step up to the speaker here?
Okay, and if you want to give your name, address to the clerk on hand.
Hi, my name is Stacy, S.T.A.C.Y., Holt, H.O.L.T., Bookburger, B.U.C.H.V.E.R.G.E.R. Address 2218 Radkey Avenue, Village of Weston.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Okay, I'm the store manager at The Store on Highway J, and one of the requirements of our store to, for an employee is to have a liquor license in order to stay employed at our store, so of course we get them a provisional when they start, and it comes in front of the board. If they don't get their permit liquor, or their liquor license, I have to terminate them. In this case, Parker can't be here this evening, Parker had some medical stuff happen last Friday night, and he's actually inpatient right now in the hospital, so that's why he's not here, but I'm not here on his behalf, and I did write the letter with him, and his mother, who he lives with, is with, is also dayna. So Parker, I believe the reason Parker was denied the liquor license was because of two underage drinking tickets, is that correct, what came up, Clay? Two underage drinking tickets. Parker is now 21 years old, Parker has been a wonderful employee at my store, he checks IDs, tobacco, cigarettes, he does what he's supposed to do, and he's a very, very good employee. It doesn't take me long when I hire someone to figure out, I can probably figure out before you as the board figure out if they should have a liquor license, based on their work ethic and the way they conduct themselves within my store, and most of the time I don't have to worry about coming and pleading my case with the board. In this case, I think it's worth it to do it, and I hope they'll consider giving Parker a license, he's a very good employee, he was young, kids make mistakes, but I've not seen anything out of him, he has, probably doesn't have a criminal record, he's a good, he's a young kid, he's 21, but he's a really good employee. And then I'm gonna turn it over now, well, I guess I'll ask if anybody has any questions for me, I'll first, and then I'll turn it over to us now.
Any questions? Go ahead, and then we'll probably have some police officers, okay? Mr. White?
And then I'll let, this is Parker's mother Dana Gray, and I'll let her speak on behalf of Parker as well, thank you.
My name is Dana, D.A.N.A. Gray, same as Parker's G.R.A.Y. I live in Wausau, 909 Augusta, and all I can speak to is when he had the underage drinking, his father and I had gone through a divorce, and he's gotten some counseling, he was struggling with a lot of things, I certainly did not allow it, and I didn't even know about one of the incidences, and I'm glad he was prosecuted, because I've always been one to ensure that I'd rather have you get caught in a little stuff so it doesn't blow up into big things. Other than that, I, you know, like Stacy said, he's, he'll walk if he has to to get to work, you know, if there's an issue, he's dependable, and feel free to, I guess, you know, I'm just here to vouch on his behalf, that this job is everything, he's had some struggles with some family issues, and he, this is probably out of the jobs he's had his most paper, I think a lot of it tests too, they've got high standards, and I think Stacy, she's tough, and he rises to that occasion, so I guess I would just ask you to respectfully consider allowing him to have that. I don't know what goes on in the store as far as checking the IDs and so forth, there's cameras everywhere, you know, so that has not been any issue, so he knows, I think, maybe firsthand, maybe someone wasn't checking IDs when he got, I don't know, you know, but took a tough, tough knock for it, and I'm glad he did, so, but feel free to answer, ask any questions if you may have.
Questions? Okay, thank you.
Yeah, you bet, thank you.
Okay, any comments from any of the trustees, or?
Are we allowed to ask questions?
Sure.
Chief Schultz, I know that you said that, so he was charged with underage, was that, and that was within five years, was that when he was age 17, 16, or do we know?
He had convictions, two underage alcohol, one was in 2017, and one was in 2015, and he also had a municipal citation for theft of alcohol in 2017.
Chief?
I apologize, I'm unable to hear very well.
Can you hear me better, John?
No, I, no, I can't, thank you.
He had two convictions for underage alcohol, consumption, one in 2015, one in 2017, and then a municipal citation for theft of alcohol in 2017.
Chief, how common are denials for, for operator licenses under similar conditions, underage drinking?
Just to set the record straight, I do not, I don't do the denials or recommend, I just do a recommendation, the way the ordinance is set, that if they have a background that meets one of the guidelines set forth in the ordinance, then I simply document that that incident or incidents occurred within one of the guidelines, and then forward it onto the board. The board has the authority under the ordinance to essentially do what they choose with the information I present them, so I do see it, I do hundreds and hundreds of these a year. I don't see all that many of them, but there's generally a couple of them in the stack that I get every other week.
I was just going to add, I was just going to add, Clay, that I think you sent me Wausau's, looking at putting together a new ordinance based on new laws and guidelines, so that they're not making this so strict as to the number of offenses maybe in a certain time period, I haven't had a chance to review it.
Yeah, I haven't.
That'll be my next question.
I haven't either, but essentially what it, what the new law is stating is that once the person has served their sentence, so to speak, or gone through their probation period, or whatever the case may be, paid their fines, that that is considered that they're done with that, and now they're moving on, is essentially kind of what the, what the new law is stating.
Okay, 'cause I, that was gonna be my question, was there, I know there's some new legislation out there, and I'm, I'm kind of leaning, like, what, how would this, if that was changed, 'cause it's coming up, what would that do here?
I think what is, I think what it says without reading it in its entirety is that if he paid the fine or, or served his sentence, that that is considered, you're rehabilitated, and that's in the past, and now we're moving forward.
Yeah, 'cause I've always stumbled a little bit with this, that we're kind of not giving them a, you know, I, you, go ahead.
I have a question for Stacy, is, yes, if you could come up here, please. Is there, if any, a success, a, a plan set in place to ensure that Parker, if I recall his name, is successful, I mean, if we did end up granting him this liquor license, is there a plan set in place that he wouldn't be selling alcohol to an underage person, would he be taking this serious, I mean, is there a plan, a success plan set in place?
Our store, The Store, Shro Company's policy is that basically everyone is carded, and not just carded, but we have to scan the back of the driver's license, it's not just, I'm gonna take a look at it, our registers are set up to scan the back of the driver's license, and it automatically tells us, yep, you can sell it, no, you can't, of course, my employees are also trained to make sure that the face that's in front of them matches the face on the driver's license, so those are all things that are part of the trading. We also have an extensive alcohol sales and tobacco sales training that we do with our employees, they're also told by me, because I'm the agent for the store, that if you, they do a sting, and you get caught selling, or, you know, the police come in and say, hey, so-and-so got caught with alcohol, they said they bought it here, their job, they're gone, they'll get terminated immediately, we have zero, we have a zero tolerance for underage sales, 'cause it's not only their license that's on the line, but if my agent license is taken, are we gonna run the store for a couple of days till we figure out what we're gonna do?
And I just want to clarify this again, if we deny that liquor license, then you would have to terminate Parker, is that correct?
Correct, our store policy is that everyone has a liquor license, and the reason for that is, someone calls in sick, someone has to stay late, we can't be shuffling around saying, well, does this person have a liquor license, or does it, you know, does this one not, or I have to send this, it doesn't work, so everybody needs to have one that's in the store, whether, you know, whenever they're, whoever's working has to have a liquor license. I also wanted to add, because you were talking about the, about the city of Wausau, just so you know, as a village, we've had liquor licenses, our company has, that have been denied by the Village of Weston, and we've moved those people over to our store 621 Stewart Avenue in Wausau, and the city of Wausau has given them a liquor license.
That's because they're following different guidelines than we are.
Right, I just want you to know that, though, we have done that, I don't want to lose Parker for my store, I could easily put him at 62 on Stewart Avenue or at our Red Mountain store, but I don't want to lose him as an employee, he's an asset to, to my store.
Go ahead, Nate.
This is Mark, this is a comment, not a question. I, I think that just about everyone in the city of Wisconsin grants or drinks underage, and I, to, to me, while I do take this, these offenses seriously, at what point in time do we cut someone a little slack, I mean, the fact that you're here speaks volumes that you care about him as an employee, so I'm, I'm considering, I'm considering to, to give him a, a chance, I don't know how the rest of the board feels.
I, I was gonna make a comment similar as well, I, I work with youth, you know, I work with youth who's, who's made bad decisions growing up, and I always believe that if, you know, that there should be a second chance, I'm really leaning towards voting against the motion to, you know, the resolution to deny his, his operational license, just because I feel that if we vote, if we give him another chance, we'll see, you know, hopefully that that would be an eye-opener for him, so that he can contribute, continue and develop himself to become a contributing member of this community, but I'm also concerned that if we vote, if we did give him this chance, and he did prove thus wrong, and you end up doing something that would violate, further violate our codes, you know, I would, I wouldn't be, you know, I, I would not be able to live with myself, you know, with that, so, but because you're here, and you know, and I, it's speaking, like what trustee Feeny said, it speaks volume to the fact that you're here, speaking on his behalf to protect him, and kind of in a sense, you know, speaking on his behalf, and I will be voting to, to, I'll be voting to approve the liquor license to him.
I can tell you that I had another employee that the liquor license was denied for, and I didn't come do this, and there's a reason for that, he wasn't worth keeping around, so, I'm here for a reason, and, and I understand the reasons you have this in place, and why, why Chief Schultz needs to, you know, check background, there's a reason for it, we don't just want anybody, and I actually didn't understand the process totally, and so I had a great conversation with the chief about it, and he explained to me, you know, I just go by the code, and I just do the background check, it's ultimately up to the board, I didn't understand how it worked, I do now, but I, I understand why these things are in place, and, and I respect that, but I'm just asking you to please consider giving Parker, you have to remember, too, this is my store, this is my livelihood, and I take what I do very seriously, I don't want to get in trouble for, you know, selling alcohol, I would feel horrible if there was, you know, sold alcohol to someone, an underage person, and there was an accident, and a bunch of young kids were killed, or, I mean, I wouldn't be able to live with myself with that either, so my, I run a pretty tight ship.
I have a question, clerk, can we?
So, so I have, I have a question.
Okay.
How comfortable are you with, with us moving forward with Parker?
He must have said chief.
Chief, chief.
Are you, you're asking me, John?
Yeah. Yes.
Yeah, I'm asking you, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Florida calls don't work so well.
Could you hear him, chief? Yeah, I'm, I'm indifferent, I mean, it's, it's your decision, I haven't put a lot of thought into it, I do a lot of these, I know it's very personal to Stacy and mom and the store, but I don't really have a strong opinion one way or the other, to be honest.
Okay, any other comments? Did you hear that, John?
I, I heard that, yeah, that helps a lot.
Can I just make one recommendation, that might give you guys a little more, maybe review it on a six-month or yearly basis until?
Well, the liquor license are good for a year.
Oh, it is for a year, okay, well, can you answer that question?
Maybe an extension of a provisional for, you know, can you extend a, I don't know if that's enough, but an extension of the provisional for 90 days or something, you know, maybe that's a stop kind of thing, I don't know if that can be done, but.
Well, that was what I was gonna ask. He's already been issued a 60-day, when he first came in, he was, right, he received a 60-day?
Provisional until the board.
Yeah, I think you could do that again, you could issue him a provisional license again, or, okay, I was just. But normally a provisional license is 60 days.
I was just gonna ask, I know there've been on some things that we have had a temporary, you know, or six months.
Yeah, I think you could do that as well.
You know, and it's, but if nothing is, nothing happens or whatever, we would just, I don't think they'd have to fill out another application, it would just be that.
Coming from the board again, like it does after the provisional.
Right, and then it would be granted for the year.
So I'll make a motion to that, Barb, that we extend Parker for six months, and that the chief makes sure that he's following all the rules.
Okay, can you hold that, John, 'cause we gotta close the hearing before you can make the motion.
I'm sorry.
That's okay, but, okay, that.
You're gonna close session now, right?
Yeah, well, we're gonna, we're gonna close the hearing unless there was any more comments, or? No, 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 nothing, we do all this in open.
Yep.
Okay, no other comments, anybody? Okay, so then I'll close the hearing, okay, John?
So I'll make my motion that I just made, so.
I'll second.
I think we should, as long as the chief is following up and doing his due diligence, we give Parker the six months to make sure that he's following the rule.
Okay, I have a motion, and a second by Nate, on the question, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so carried, okay. Any written correspondence? Reports, minutes from boards, committees, commissions?
We don't have any.
I was just gonna say, nothing is highlighted, so. Reports from departments, administrator.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I guess I've included a couple items on our non unfinished business for comments later, so I did submit a report for the board, I guess the one thing related to legal matters, you may be aware of the SBA tower lease suit, I guess, that we have initiated with this, with respect to the, I guess, non-compliance with our lease terms, the challenge of it that we're making, and then SBA Towers issued a counterclaim, which has now been assigned to a attorney through our insurance company, so Attorney Edie had indicated that that was a good thing, because now, you know, his resources can be devoted to the main claim, and, and then the, the other firm, which is represented by Attorney Mark Roman in this case, they can focus on the counterclaim, which, you know, he, their, that counterclaim is actually focused on that we denied a permit on the basis of requiring a building permit, which we don't, it's, this is all centered on whether they're meeting the lease terms, so, just a point of clarification, I guess, and information for the board, I guess, unless you have questions on what I reported on, the other items, I think, are covered, I can make some comments on that, on the new and unfinished business section of the agenda.
Okay, anybody got any questions or comments, the only one I have is, is on that, is the new legislation that they're proposing, is that, would that affect this in any way?
Legislation on?
On cell towers and locations and?
Well, this, the, the question here is that we're leasing a piece of property for that pole.
Okay.
And their term, are, you know, the, typically they would define what they are placing on that pole, and that is the facilities that we're approving, so when they're putting, when they're co-locating other carriers on there, we should therefore then be entitled to more rent, the legislation you're talking about is really the requirement or the restrictions that we would have on regulating them in, say, in public right-of-ways or any other private property out there that.
Okay, I did realize we're actually leasing the property itself, I, 'cause I had read somewhere where they were talking about whether or not we could charge for, if, say, they were leasing it, and they put extra carriers on there, or whatever, I know there was something in that law that they were discussing about that, but I'm not sure, but I guess we're worried about it.
The law you're saying, law you're referring to is just in terms of our ability to put more restrictions on them through our zoning code or right-of-way policies on other people's property.
Anybody have any questions, comments, okay, I know you don't have a report, but did you have anything to add, clerk?
No.
Okay, finance, anything to add?
Nothing to add.
Okay, fire and EMS, do you have anything to add?
We're fixing the air conditioning unit at Station 2, we tapped in Melbrae today, they should be done this week, I would think, we melted a transmission out on one of our cars, so that's awesome, so that's in the shop.
Not hearing.
Okay, try talking into that speaker, maybe it'll help.
We're fixing the air conditioner at Station 2, should be done this week, and we melted a transmission out on one of our chase cars, so that's in the shop, otherwise it's basically status quo, we have another house burn on Schofield Avenue, looking tentatively for June 14th.
Is the house down there?
Yep, it's the, the house in front of the vacant mobile home, kind of by.
It's next to Wiki.
Oh, that, that one, okay, I was wondering if that house.
Or on the other side.
Yeah, it's, it's, yeah, yes, Alpine Trailer Park, so it's been vacant for quite a while, the developer burned down, so we're gonna do that for training, and it's always a good time, it's excellent education, and other than that, it's been busy, busy.
I was wondering if it was finally that one over, down that way, that the roof is falling in on it, no?
That one needs redone, too.
Okay, all right, any questions for Matt?
All right.
Thank you. Parks and Recreation, anything to add? It's not here, okay.
I, I do have a question for, I guess, I don't know, Keith, if you'll be able to answer, or Jessica, I know that Sean put in here that, that we charge for staff time, and staff time materials to paint the, you know, the rugby ball, fields for the Irish Fest, do they use any of our equipments, whether, you know, any other of our equipments, and if so, do we charge them for it, or like, for example, just saying, I have no idea, but bike racks?
I can probably answer that one, unless you, do you want to answer, Keith?
I guess I, if you know, I would encourage you to respond, I don't, you know, I guess I don't know what equipment they've used, I know we've furnished, furnished labor, and, but they have reimbursed us for part of that in the past, so if you know about that.
Yeah, last year, yeah, last year, they did paint the rugby fields, and they charged them for the labor, they charged them for the paint, they charged them for all that, it was, I think, around $700. There is an option that if the rugby coach, the Wausau rugby coach or whatever, if they would want to paint it themselves, they would charge to use the equipment, and then they could either buy the paint, or, you know, we would charge them for the paint, and then they would provide the labor.
The reason why I bring that up is 'cause I do a lot of special events with the city of Wausau, and if we were to use, for example, a stage hypothetically, you know, they would charge us a fee to use that, you know, to use that stage, or if we were to use a cone or something along that lines, we would charge, there's a set fee for that as well, so that's the main point as to why I was just asking, to make sure that, that, to ask if we're charging them for any rentals of our, we're using of our equipment.
Yep.
Well, I guess to that point, though, I'm not sure we have a, a well-defined policy on that, 'cause I know when Irish Fest first started, we were furnishing a lot of services, weren't we?
In kind, yes.
In kind, or, I don't charge, and I think those are things that we have to be consistent and equitable with, regardless of what organization or group might be asking for some, some help, so.
I think, was it about a year or two years ago, is when the board? I think, was it about a year, two years ago, is when the board said they didn't want us to be doing it for, that we should charge, and treat everybody the same, so, I think we are doing that now.
Yes.
You know? Okay, anything else? All right. Planning and development, anything to add?
I don't have anything.
Okay, ref is recycling the same, and our chief, I don't think he has anything to add, he's left. Public Works, anything to add, or talk about, or?
I guess, last week Friday, we did have a, an employee get assaulted out at the yardway site on Ryan Street, by, I guess, a disgruntled resident who.
Really?
Was upset about, I don't know what.
Okay, what in the world?
So, I know some staff is a little uneasy right now with dealing with residents who maybe are approaching them.
Did you say he got, he was, he or she was assaulted?
Correct, yes.
Okay.
He was physically assaulted by a resident, well, I think it's a resident.
Is the employee okay?
The employee's okay.
Was the resident or supposed arrested?
Uh, the.
Hold it, make sure, make sure I can hear what's going on.
Yeah.
Mike, would you like to bring it a little closer?
Yeah, so, where is John at?
Mike was explaining that we had an employee assaulted at the Ryan Street site last Friday.
Yeah, so.
Thank you, Keith, I can hear you.
Okay.
Well, I'm right next to the microphone and stuff.
John, maybe if you're here, it wouldn't be so hard.
So, yeah, the employee's okay, they, you know, pretty much took the stance of, I'm not gonna move, I'm just gonna try to get myself away from this situation while the person was shoving and grabbing and whatnot. So, he did file a police report with Everest Metro, but at the time, we did not have a name of a person, we had a description of a vehicle and a partial license plate, so, I'm not, I don't believe they've found the person yet. I know, as we talked about our capital projects, one thing was trying to get a gated access and more cameras out at Ryan Street, I think this is one of those things where, you know, wouldn't have stopped it, but at least we would have been able to capture it on video and been able to help employees, so, I guess, just wanted to bring that to your attention, that it did happen.
Jeez.
And then, we did have another person today while we were out doing our water main flushing, resident came to approach one of our utility operators, and they seemed to be a little anxious, on edge, and our utility person said, call the office, talk to Michael, and he kinda just drove away. So, I know, I talked to the resident, they seemed more upset that the utility operator didn't even wanna talk to him, but.
I was just gonna say that.
But, you know, I guess, staff's a little uneasy right now, just approaching anybody who looks like they're a little angry on the street, one-on-one, so.
Oh.
I guess, we'll, we'll be working through that, and probably follow up with Chief Schultz on any, any, maybe, best practices they would, or tips of advice they would offer to staff when they find themselves in those situations.
So, by other means, if I'm out there and I see someone dumping something they shouldn't, I should maybe keep my mouth shut?
Get a license plate number and description of the person.
I tried, you know, but it was like, okay, but they picked it up and took it.
Yeah.
And I'm sure they brought it back when I was gone, but, you know, but, yeah.
Please, please let that employee know that they're in my thoughts, and I'm very, I'm very saddened that they had to endure that.
Sure, will do.
Keith?
I guess, I, I have hope perhaps that Chief Schultz would remain and hear this, I know, but I was gonna ask if they, what they had found out, I know that Sergeant Peterson, I think, was the one who's following up on it, but, I guess, we hear about the mental health issues in the community, so it's not just the police department that's dealing with them, I think that's something I'd like the board to be aware of, and I know we talk about it with our building inspectors, going out to meet people and issue citations, or encounter people on less than friendly terms, and, you know, then there's, even then there's the office issue, which ties into our capital improvement plan, the municipal facilities, deficiencies, as we've talked about, because of the age of the facilities. So, I think, just another sign of times, I suppose, but it doesn't affect only the police.
Yeah, and I, I think so sad, I think we are so lucky to have that facility, and to be able to, you know, have an area to go, and it's kept up, you know, we've improved it so much compared to what it used to be, and it just kind of is too sad that, you know, people can't appreciate what they got instead of, you know.
Yeah.
Okay, technology, anything to add?
Nothing to add.
Any questions? Okay. I'd like a motion to acknowledge twenty-one, twenty-three, twenty-five, and twenty-nine.
So moved.
Motion by E.
Second.
Second by Nate, on the question. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye. Did you hear that?
Yes, I heard that, John. Can you hear me? Can you hear Barb?
Can you hear Barb?
Yes, I can.
Okay, probably should pull this closer. Okay. Work products, transmittal, there's nothing on the agenda. Consent agenda, is there anything that anybody wants to have pulled? Okay, then we have item thirty-one, approve operator license, approve vouchers fifty-three ninety-one to fifty-four ninety-four, approve hotel motel licenses for two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty term, what's your pleasure?
Move to approve.
Motion by E.
Second.
Second by Nate, on the question. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? So carry. Nothing on the ordinances or resolutions? New business or unfinished business? McDevco dues, what's your pleasure?
Move to approve, yeah, move to approve.
Okay, motion by E.
Second.
Second by Nate.
Actually, hold on. Oh, I just realized, I just remember, I'm a member of the McDevco board, so I should probably abstain, abstain myself on this, actually.
Okay.
Okay, withdrawing my, my motion.
Okay.
Let's see, then I move.
Withdraw your second, didn't you?
Yeah, I withdraw my second, and I move to pay the annual dues owed to McDevco.
Motion by Nate, do I have a second?
Can I second it?
Yes, you can.
Yeah, sure.
Okay, I'll second.
Second by John. Okay, on the question.
On the question, what is the amount we recommend? So, I checked with.
Oh, yes.
I checked, I checked with Mozeni, Rathchild, Ramon, and Corner Water. Of those four, two paid dues to the net, the recommended amount for a community partner is one thousand up to three thousand nine hundred ninety-nine. Because if I were to make a recommendation, I'd say we could contribute up to a thousand dollars. I, I think that, as we look back at what we have contributed over time, it's varied from nothing to four thousand dollars for special circumstances, like they were doing an economic development report of some kind. So, just a little extra background, I guess we should include the amount on this if we're taking or making the action.
My question would be.
I'll make the motion that we make it at a thousand dollars for what Keith said.
Second.
Okay, then you would, you would be amending the motion.
I'm amending the motion to say that, whatever it is, we're gonna, we're gonna pay a thousand dollars.
One thousand dollars.
Okay, I have a motion to amend for, to include one thousand dollars, do I have a second on that?
I second the amendment to the motion.
Okay, second by Nate, all right. On the motion as amended, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? So carry.
Just, I just.
Oh, and, and.
Abstained.
Yeah, he has abstained, as he is a member of the board, of the McDevco board. Okay, now, the motion as amended, what's your pleasure?
I move.
We've got a motion, we just, what's your pleasure, to approve or not approve?
Approve.
Okay. All in favor?
Second. Aye.
Aye, I think, yeah. I stated it wrong, it was just, we have the motion, we had the motion, we just need to, the vote. All in favor signify by saying aye, I stated it wrong, I'm sorry. Opposed? So carry.
Abstained.
Okay, and with Nate, Nate, E abstaining. Okay, now, proposed committee schedule changes, finance and public safety, I didn't have anything in the packet, what?
I, I just had a question, I'm looking at the Parks and Recreation, four-thirty, and public safety and nuisance, is this saying that Public Safety and Nuisance Committee is after the Parks and Recreation, or is it saying at the same time at four-thirty?
Where do you get that?
Soon, yeah.
Oh, there it is, I didn't have enough.
Purple one.
The fourth Monday of each month.
Where's the, oh, finance?
Yeah, we're recommending, because, we're recommending that Public Safety and/or the new committee that we're talking about, or proposing to create, that it just moves back to where it was, it always was on the fourth Monday at six o'clock, so we're just recommending that it goes back there.
I don't.
I just, no.
And then, and then recommending, because on the last calendar, we had Finance at six-thirty, so then we're recommending swapping those two, and putting Finance on the third Monday at four-thirty, and that actually works better for Jessica.
Okay, but I'm questioning, we have auditors on that committee, and during tax time, they are not going to be here at four-thirty. Sometimes we have a hard time getting them here at six-thirty.
Also, my understanding is.
Well, my concern was Carrie hasn't been there since I can remember, anyway, she has expressed concern in the past that she wasn't sure she wanted to continue, so I guess this is something maybe we can switch for now and see what kind of flexibility we could get, she has not come during her busy time, anyway.
Yeah, we checked with the, with them to find out if they can do it.
Well, the other two are retired, Mark was.
Well, yes, but Dick Jaeger still works during tax time.
Even though, even though he's retired?
Yes, he's still working for the company during tax time.
We can check with him. I didn't think it would be a problem.
I know, and I, I mean, because, unlike Bob Bender, I, I don't know if he's retired, but I don't know what his schedule is, so, I guess.
And then the, so the fourth Monday would just be back to what it was last year, okay, just wanted to clarify that.
The, the time recommended would be perfect during budget time, because I was picturing having the board and the finance being able to work together for that.
For budget.
For budget.
And then the other thing that you're going to find out possibly is Finance sometimes runs pretty long, are we gonna be running in?
I've been there, and this would require, Mark's been very timely when he's been running it recently, I don't think it would be an issue.
Yeah, because we, I think one of the first ones we had, we went, especially when we had with the tourism, I'm just trying to, when is the, that one with the public safety?
Public safety is in the purple.
Fourth Monday of the month at four-thirty.
It'll be after the Parks and Recreation.
Six o'clock.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, you know what, it's just, it's cut off.
That's why.
I apologize.
Okay.
It's cut off there.
Okay, I was trying to, I'm looking, and I'm going, where is?
I did this in an Excel spreadsheet, and I cut it off, I apologize.
I do that all the time, it's okay.
Yeah. Like I said, the only question I have is, I guess I wanna make sure that we're not losing the committee members we have on Finance, because we've been very fortunate to have three people that, you know, are dealing in the Finance, and I just.
Well, if you want to wait until we talk with those two.
I mean, because that's why we're changing, that's why we're changing Public Safety around, is because.
Well, that was one of the reasons, yeah, because.
Was because there was members that didn't wanna come in at four-thirty, or couldn't come in at four-thirty.
Right.
So, I guess I'm looking at it and going.
Same way.
Yeah, it's the same way, well, what about Finance? I mean, I'm not too happy about it, but that's.
We can, we can hold off on this and check with those members.
Yeah.
We already know Public Safety, we know that four-thirty's not a good time for those members, so, why don't we contact those committee members, and then we'll bring this back to the board.
Yeah, I appreciate it, because if it hasn't been, like I said, if we're sacrificing one committee for another, that's not, you know, and I know Mark Maloney originally didn't think he won.
Well, that is the one person we have talked to, he thought it was a good, it was a good switch, he had no objection to it.
Okay, because originally, he didn't think it was a good, but like I said, please check with those members, all three of them, to see, and I don't know, like I said, if Carrie, I know she's had some problems getting here, but, you know. I guess, what is your pleasure, and do we wanna refer it to, to check, to find out what the Finance Committee members, what the, you know, the citizen members, what.
If it doesn't work out, what's our options?
Do a different day or something.
Instead of a Monday?
Yeah.
Maybe Tuesday or Wednesday or something?
I will not be at any Wednesday meetings.
No, no, I mean, I think originally Finance was on a Thursday, you know, but, yeah, I mean, there's, we have CDA on Tuesday, I mean, it isn't like, you know, we can't, I mean, it's nice having them all at one, you know, on Mondays if we can, but, you know, that would be the other thought, just find them.
So, I mean, what I'm hearing is, there's really just conflict with the Finance right now, because of, because I think for Public Safety, we're okay with what it is, is it possible for us to approve all the other, you know, the other changes except for Finance?
Yeah, we could do that.
So, then I'll make the motion to approve the committee meeting dates for all the other committees except for Finance. I second that.
I have a motion and a second, on the question, I guess mine being that maybe you could've put Public Safety in a different spot.
Well, there's more discussion to be had on the Public Safety slash Nuisance Committee as well.
Right, right. So, I, I guess, my recommendation would be that we just hold all of it till we get. But I have a motion and a second, on the question. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Are you there, John?
I said aye.
Okay.
Still here.
Okay, opposed? No.
So, that means Public Safety's going back to the fourth Monday at six now?
Yes.
Okay, update on sports complex feasibility study.
I think last time we met, we just had the meeting with the McDevco group, the municipalities, so perhaps, I'm just being redundant, but I think what's, what's taking place is that the baseball complex that had been evaluated by Victus was put out in front of the, those municipalities, to be taken back and have each of them digested, potentially take some action to refer it back to the county, or, you know, express support, but I think everybody's waiting really for the, the other study that McDevco's doing on the Olympic Training Facility and Events Center, so, I don't know when that's gonna be revealed, presented, and we were told on Friday that Jim Warsaw is no longer with McDevco, so.
Really?
He was the kind of the, the lead guy on those, around that study, so, I guess from now, from here on, we're working with Vicki. so I guess from now, from here on, we're working with Vicky Rex. But I know Jim said he had offered to continue working on those projects, but we're not sure if he's involved anymore, so I guess that's the extent of my update on that, unless you have questions.
Any questions for Keith? Okay, thank you. Update on Camp Phillips Center.
So there, um, there's going to be a modified, a modified version of Phase One that's going to be proposed in terms of the wetland disturbance request. So we want to get that ready and submitted to DNR so that the review of the permit is reinitiated in the next couple of weeks. I know we still have some other information we want to get from FDG on their projected tax increment generation and things, but I guess that can go on concurrently even while the permit is being reviewed. And then the other thing would be the memorandum of understanding, which is not, this is, it's not a legally binding document, but just gives, I guess, each party comfort that we're going to continue the effort to get to the, get to a decision point on the, on the wetland disturbance. So FDG sent an email on Thursday or Friday to indicate that they were okay, they'd like to have us take that up at our next meeting for renewal or, yeah, renewing that agreement, because technically it expires on the 11th of June.
Are we making any progress?
Well, yes, I mentioned, yes, we met with the DNR, and they seemed, I think I was in the middle of my, my written report, it probably happened after the last meeting here, but the DNR seemed very receptive to the modified request, a much reduced amount of disturbance. They seem okay with the road proposal going in from Westview Boulevard extended to the east. That's the most logical, and, you know, even though there's some disturbance involved, it's the most logical and best place for the road to come in. But that would be supported by DOT as well.
I, I see where they gave us a little bit of land back. You were saying that it was considered not necessarily wetlands, it was, but a-
Artificial?
Artificial, thank you.
Yeah, that helps, it helps from the state level, but it really isn't acknowledged by the Army Corps.
Okay.
That was the, kind of the dilemma, or, you know, the reason for not pursuing the artificial thing so aggressively, because it really wasn't going to help on the, on the federal side.
Okay. Okay, well, when I read that, I thought, oh, well, okay. I was thinking about Army Corps, too. All right, any other questions or comments? Okay, update on municipal facilities.
So, we spoke with John Wallenkamp from CUNY on Friday. I know his schedule has been matching up. Last time we had some discussion at the board level on this, was probably prior to the election. I know it was prior to the election, I, I think we had hoped to bring John here in May for the May meeting, but he was going to be out, he was out at a conference in, I think, Utah or Las Vegas or somewhere, and anyway, he was making a presentation and unable to attend. We had taken facilities tour back in, tours back in February with a number of committee members or trustees. Following that, we had intended to start initiating a public relations campaign, if you will, open, have open houses. The thought was bringing John back here to talk to the board about that again, but the only changeover we've ended up having in the board now is that Nate, trustee Nate Feeny has been added, so I know he had some tours with Michael here when he came to visit. So I, I guess it's been staff's understanding, my understanding, that we were going to continue the process. The whole board is not here tonight, because, and I think our thought, after talking to John last, last Friday, was that we would conduct an open house as early as next meeting, that Monday, June 17th. That would be going on concurrently perhaps with our meetings that night, but I guess with the, with the entire board not being here tonight, to talk about this further, because I think there's been some concerns expressed by a couple of members, I guess I'd recommend we wait till the entire board is here and talk about this again on the 17th.
Okay, what, I guess my question would be, what was the concern about conducting an open house? I have a real problem with us pushing out continually. We're going to end up not being in a very good place when it comes to deciding what we're going to do or what we're going to borrow. I don't want to miss that timeframe, because we need to be, you know, moving along with this, and I guess, I'm, I'm not sure what the problem would be with having an open house. It's not like we're deciding anything.
That's true, and I, but I guess I also don't want to not have the board, you know, of one mind. I mean, that's not to say that we're going to have unanimous opinion, but at least we have everybody weighing in on it. If there are some concerns, and we can talk about those, or what, what other questions we need to answer. I have mixed feelings about it myself, I would, I guess, I guess I'd prefer to see it go forward, but I want to be mindful of everyone's, respectful of everybody's opinions, and, and I guess, from that perspective, I, I don't know that we want to push the issue with all the way us talking with CUNY again about improvements over at the Public Safety Building as well, but.
Well, I don't know, what, what, John, what do you have? What are your thoughts?
Well, I, I think we all need to be in front of them and, and talk to them and ask the specific questions that we need answered.
Okay, he isn't going to be here, though. We're just talking about an open house, right?
He would be here to conduct the open house.
Okay, he would be, okay, I'm sorry.
So, so I will gladly be on the phone again and ask my questions.
You're not going to be at the next meeting either, just by phone?
I, I'm going to be by phone, yep. I'm in Jacksonville.
Okay, Nate, do you have, what are your thoughts? Do you want to wait, I mean, we can wait, I, I'm just not understanding where, what the objection could be to the open house on that night, but.
I, I can't think of any either. We absolutely need to have this open house, and, you know, if the public wants to come in and take a look, all the more better. That everyone should see just how dire the need for new facilities are.
Nate, Nate, and I think, Nate, you, you hit it right on the spot, that's exactly what I was, what I was thinking. I understand why staff would be hesitant about it, but I don't see why there should be any controversies or any concerns.
Okay, so I guess, should we make a motion to continue with open house? I mean, the, the two people that aren't here, I guess they can have their concerns, I mean, it's not, you know.
Well, because the other concern we have related to this is, we talked about putting things in the newsletter we're currently working on.
Okay.
And it would be nice to start to get the information out.
Right.
About some of these open houses.
Right.
And the next issue coming out, because then we don't have to do an extra mailing, because I'm sure we're going to do more than one open house.
Right.
And if we can get, if we can move forward with that, we could take advantage of using the newsletter to notify residents.
Okay, so that even is, you know, better yet, that we do it, have the, schedule it. Okay, so, do I have a motion to?
I'll move.
Motion by Nate? Have a second?
I'll second it.
Second by E. On the question, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? So Carrie. So Keith, do you, you don't have a problem with that, I assume?
It's the board's decision.
Yeah. Like I said, I know there's two people missing, but we've talked about this and, over and over, and this, I think we all understand that there is a timeframe here, and we got to keep pushing it, otherwise we're going to find ourselves, you know. Okay. Okay. Okay, reconsider conditions in the proposed intergovernmental agreement with the Town and Village of Weston for cost sharing on reconstruction of Ross Avenue and Kramer Lane. Okay, does any, Keith, do you have any, or Michael?
Yeah, I don't know if, I don't know if the description of the term, of the limits of the project is quite correct, but this is some feedback we received, this comes after some feedback we received from the Town of Weston, that they wanted to modify some of the proposed conditions in this agreement, which I outlined in the, in the cover sheet for this item. I guess, well, Michael and I met with Milt, talked to him, I guess, in follow-up, and I think, as I mentioned, I'm not necessarily in agreement with the things that they've asked for. I think one thing they want to do is remove the roundabout, which was proposed at the corner of Ross and Kramer, and I think we do that as an, as a safety improvement, because that intersection, even though it may not have any, any accident history, I think everybody that drives that route sees it, sees it as an accident waiting to happen. So, I guess, we would certainly want to see, I guess, from my perspective, I want to see that remain. I think the other question was the cost share on it. The overall cost share on the street improvements was based on amount of frontage of parcels on the highway, around the roads, and they wanted to kind of look at the, at the roundabout as a 50-50 deal. Whether that's fair or not, I don't know, maybe, you know, this is certainly subject to negotiation with them, but the other thing was that they, they wanted to include a clause if there was annexation of property, that there would be a payment to, to the town by the village in proportion to the, some kind of depreciated schedule of, of value of the, of the road. And to me, I don't know, Michael and I talked about that, that really, that's, it really doesn't make sense. I mean, in a lot of cases, we get jurisdictional transfer of, of roads, like with Schofield Avenue, for instance. We didn't take it from the county unless they reconstructed it. As I, as we explained to Milt, we're just taking on a liability. You reconstruct the road, okay, that's probably what we should expect to happen. So, I mean, there's things there that I don't think we would support. I wouldn't support them, I guess. I guess it's up to the board what they want to do.
Yeah, actually, Keith, I'm, I'm 100% behind you. I really struggle when Milt is telling us what we should pay for in the town versus in the village. It's always been a frustration of mine. I apologize for, for that, but it's just, it's just wrong. We, we take care of so much for the town. Just, just my opinion.
Yes, no, I think you're right, and I agree with you.
Nate, any comment?
I mean, I concur, this, it's ridiculous. Keith, for what it's worth, I'm behind you 100%.
I mean, me? I, I, I definitely agree with Administrator Donnerhoff about the remarks that he made. I, I think I would encourage staff to continue negotiating and discussion with him, and ensure that we get a fair deal, I guess.
I agree, I, I mean, to say, the clause, when I read that clause, I'm going, what do you mean? We're taking over the road, now we got all the maintenance on it, just like we said, Schofield Avenue. You asked to have it fixed before you take it. And as far as the roundabout, that needs, that roundabout is needed on that corner. I mean, we go that way, our son lives down that way, and that's terrible. I mean, it, it's never been a good corner, you know. So I, you know, to eliminate it, no, and I think, I agree, that it should be funded on the, just as the rest of the project is. I mean, it's negotiated, but I don't know what our percentage is by formula on the roundabout, but.
It was a, the entire project was a 21-79% split, with the village being 21% and the town being 79%.
Okay.
And that was from Riverbend out to Kirsten.
And now the town wants a 50-50 split?
On the roundabout.
On the roundabout. Yeah, and I guess, I think as Keith indicated in there, on that specific corner.
Right.
Three of the four corners are in the town, so that's a 75-25, I guess, corner, so. I guess if anything, I could see that being, you know, instead of the 79-21, okay, the roundabout's 25-75, but.
Okay, yeah, that would be a compromise.
A little compromise.
Okay, so what's your pleasure on this? Motion to propose, accept or deny?
Staff's recommendation is to recommend further discussion, is that correct? So I, I guess I'll make the recommendation to allow staff, encourage staff to continue discussions between, with the Town, Town of Weston.
Yep, motion by E. Seconds by Nate. On the question?
So if I could just ask then, so you're supporting that we take these comments back to the town and say, this is the board's sentiment?
Exactly, yeah. Right, I could, I could concur with what Michael said on the roundabout of, you know, the 25-75, but other than that, we go by.
All right, because I know they will be taking this, well, they're going to be expecting them to take discussion back up at their next meeting, which is going to be the 21st, or no, the 18th. I'm giving the dates of the month mixed up. It'll be the second Tuesday, Tuesday after our second meeting.
Okay. And on the question, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? So Carrie. All right, any remarks from trustees?
Yes, I have a couple. First is, I just want to, you know, I'm going off with what Michael was saying earlier about the fact that our, our staff were assaulted, and, you know, we talked a lot about safety and everything. I know that there was also the shooting in Virginia Beach, which happened in a municipal center, you know. I strongly encourage that this, this board continues discussion, or began discussion, if it hasn't, about ensuring the safety of our staff that are here, along with the attendees that, or the citizens that come here for business. So it is the responsibility of our board to make sure that everybody's safe, and I think this is where the discussions into the CIP, you know, this CIP borrowing, et cetera, is discussed about and make sure that everybody's safe. I, I don't want to see an incident where, you know, someone is assaulted here or anywhere on any of our properties, or I don't want to see an incident where, you know, some violent behavior happens. So I encourage that the board, you know, and maybe even add this to the agenda next time to talk about the safety of our staff as well. That's the first thing. The second thing I want to talk about was telecom, who could, this means, you know, to, about someone calling. I, I understand the fact that we're trying to be flexible, but it's an inconvenience to the individuals that are here. Not saying anything against you, John, but just being, but the fact that there's individuals that are calling in, and we're, we're here, we're trying to listen to each other, it's such an inconvenience. It's either, we either cut off telecom, you know, and not allow there to be any individuals calling in, or we invest in better equipment to make sure that we can, you know, call or, call, you know, call and make it more efficient. And, you know, all the boards that I serve on, you can't call in for meetings, you know, so. But that's my two cents, and that's all I really have.
Okay. Nate?
In the HR committee today, we, we were discussing what constitutes a full-time employee currently- Currently, there's an exemption under federal law that says if there's under 50 employees, we don't have to have, uh, benefits or have employees be benefit eligible at 30 hours. Just with, uh, just because we lack a clear policy on what constitutes full-time employees and how we want to handle employees working less than 40 hours, the Human Resources Committee is going to, uh, consider and research, um, a more nuanced but comprehensive policy that, um, that we can, uh, put into the employee handbook. And then, uh, that's, uh, that's really my big thing. Oh, um, I just want to, uh, piggyback off of, uh, Trustee Jong's, uh, comments. I, I don't think that anyone that works here disagrees that we need a new facility. Well, two new facilities, one for the staff and a garage, um, and safety, especially in this day and age, has to be paramount. We want all of our employees to feel safe, uh, when they come into work.
John, do you have anything?
Well, actually, I do. So, Trustee Jong and Nate, um, I do apologize for having to be on the phone, 'cause it doesn't seem like I'm there, but I'm actually there and feel like I'm, I'm participating. And, and when you think about it, Nate and Trustee Jong, let's think about what we have to do for our taxpayers to make sure that we're gonna give them the value. What is it gonna be, what's gonna be the right thing to do for them? So, I apologize for being on the phone. I would love to be face-to-face and talking with all of you, but my job takes me elsewhere. That's the reality. So if you need to put me on FaceTime or live feed, whatever, go right ahead. It, it doesn't really matter to me, but just, just realize that at least I'm here and I'm attending the meeting. And for all of us that may not be attending the meetings, for whatever reason, I'm still here.
Uh, Trustee Ziegler, I said nothing about you, uh, you phoning in.
I, I, I know, I know you didn't need, but I, I just, I just was throwing that out there as a thought.
And we actually just got a, this is a new that I requested, because the old one, we were on the, was on the phone and it really was bad. I was just trying to figure out different times if there's a way that we can put it closer to a speaker or some, you know, where that he could hear us, but I don't know how that works either, so.
And, and I'm pretty sure, Barb, that my phone is working 100% effectively, but it might not be receiving effectively at the village, where people are not standing up to the microphone so I can hear.
Right, that's what I think.
And that's the reality of it.
Yeah, I think that's what we're gonna have to stress more and more, is when we're speaking, to have our microphone close to where we're speaking.
Exactly. You, you, you need to, you need to speak forward and, and be an upfront. It's, that's the way it is.
Well, I will make this remark. We wouldn't have to have, to do that if you were able to be here for the meetings. And not trying to sound, uh, offensive or com- or against you or in any way, John. I'm just stating the facts, you know, that, uh, I know that you made the remark saying that, uh, we're doing the right thing for the citizen, and I agree with you, but I'm sure the citizens also would like to see their trustee here as well.
You know, you know, I'm about to get very frustrated. How many meetings did you miss when I was sitting at the front table?
Well, I.
Okay, okay.
John, I'm not trying to argue with you about anything like that. I'm just trying to make a remark. Like I said, I was not attacking you, I'm just being very honest here, um, and not trying to attack you in any way here.
Okay, um, actually, I used to attend a meeting where half of the board came in by phone, so, I mean, and it was a count, uh, not a county, but it was a county-wide type committee. Okay, anything else?
No.
Okay, Nate, did I ask you? John, did you have any comments for tonight?
I think he, I think he made his comments, and I just, to follow up to that, I know that, uh, Robert.
Mark could've gotten disconnected.
I guess he wasn't there. Still, are you back?
I'm right here.
Sorry about that, I don't know what happened.
Okay.
You must've, you must've tied it down.
Okay, did you have any more comments, John?
I do not.
All right. I just have a more of a question for Michael. When that, um, employee encountered, uh, a resident, or hopefully, at least it was a resident.
Yeah.
Do, was he in there for cleaning up, or what was the issue?
He was, um, watering the drop-off area, 'cause it was dry and dusty on Friday, so he was watering it for dust control and suppression, and I think one of the initial remarks is, why do you have to make this so muddy? To paraphrase what Michael said, and kinda, I guess, escalate it from that.
Okay, oh, 'cause my, I guess my question was going to be, your comment was, you know, when they're cleaning that up, I would hope that the gate would be closed.
Yeah.
When they're in there working, you know, I would hope that they would not be, you know, having residents in there that they could close it off and.
Yeah.
Temporary sign, you know?
Yeah, and I think there's other ways, too. I've seen other communities set up where, um, you know, you kinda have the drop-off on one side and you can clean it from the backside, so you're not intermingling, so, I mean, any future setup we have, I think that's how we'd like to do it, so that there's.
I mean, this is like 110% better than what we had before.
Yeah.
Pushed a long time for that one. Okay, that was my only comment. I thought, well, okay, what? Did the guy get mad because his machine was in his way, or? Okay, so you're trying to do good only to get scolded, huh? Okay. All right, our, um, next, any future items? All right, next meeting dates, um, just remember that June 25th at 4 o'clock is the Board of Review. I hope we all are gonna be able to make that. And then, of course, 17th and the 1st and the 15th are our regular meetings. Okay, with no other planned business, the meeting is adjourned until June 17th, 2019, at 6:00 PM. I guess we aren't doing a motion to close the meeting anymore?
Well, I, I moved to adjourn.
Okay, motion to adjourn by Nate, second by E. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. This is gone. Motion adjourned at, okay, well, I got.
7:19.
7:19. Thank you, everyone.
Sure, I just wanna make a.